I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, pour out your Holy Spirit on your faithful people. Keep us steadfast in your grace and truth, protect and deliver us in times of temptation, defend us against all enemies, and grant to our city your saving peace. We pray tonight for the guidance and wisdom as we make decisions regarding the future of our city. We ask that you protect and guide the men and women serving our community, our state, and our nation. Be with them in all they do. We thank you for your presence, your power, and your peace. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call tonight. We note that Mayor Lord is not with us, so I'd like to have a motion and a second to excuse her.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. We have one item on the communication agenda tonight. Julie Sermopolis will present the graduating class of 2019. Sir. Julie.
Hi. Good evening, council members. I wanted to bring you the 2019 CERT graduating class. As you know, the Community Emergency Response Team Program educates people about disaster preparedness for hazards that may impact their area and trains them in basic disaster response skills such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. Using this training learned in a classroom setting and during exercise, CERT members can assist others in their neighborhood or workplace following an event when professional responders are not immediately available to help. CERT members are also encouraged to support emergency response agencies by taking a more active role in emergency preparedness projects in their own community. I'm proud to introduce the Goodyear CERT class of 2019, which brings the Goodyear team total to 113 active CERT members. So I'm going to read a few names, and they're going to come up, and we would like to take a picture if that's okay. Dave Bisson, Terry Cambrun, Janice Cook, Mac Cook, Alex Duszek, Tony Eager, Teresa Ellisam, and Marina Sammy Nathan. I'm not sure that Roger, no. We had other graduates as well, including Roger Reed, Larry Bindanelli, Larnell Farmer, Heather Hirka, Daniel Nahavas, Sam Schering, that weren't able to join us tonight. But I have to say just something very quickly about this group. I have, they've adopted Tanya. I'm pretty sure they've adopted me as well. They were a fabulous group to train. They were a lot of fun, and they're incredibly enthusiastic. And what we have here, the skill set that we have here represented today, is quite amazing. So I'm pleased that they're now part of the Goodyear team.
Julie, thank you. What we'd like to do before we stand for the photo op is, given the length of tonight's agenda, I've asked Wally Campbell to please make comments on behalf of all of us because we are all very grateful. But Wally will make remarks, and then we'll take pictures.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Stip. Well, since I am a CERT member myself, I know what the training entails, and I know how exciting it is to finally finish the course. For you to be able to do this is significant in the event that we have an emergency where we need to call on you. We know that you will be the first to start protecting your own neighborhood. I think that the enthusiasm that is displayed by Julie is very contagious to all of you, and I know you enjoyed it. I especially enjoyed it when we were working on the injured and the dead bodies and all of that. That was really fun, and it was fun to learn to mark an X when you did a room to be sure you did it right. But thank y'all all so very much. We're very proud of you, and we would encourage you to talk to your neighbors and encourage them to want to be a CERT member as well, so that when Julie starts her next class, whenever that is, we'll have willing folks ready to go. So thank you so much.
Great. So we'll come here to the front of the dais. We'll come down, and we'll get a couple of pictures.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Council members.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell, thank you so much for your remarks. Appreciate that. So next on the agenda is the time for citizens to come forward to speak to the city council on any non-agenda item that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Goodyear. Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor. Vice Mayor.
Okay. Well, next is the consent agenda. If I can have the city clerk read consent agenda items two through 10 by title only, please.
Two, approval of minutes. Three, approve the expenditure of funds for the Rainbow Valley Water Reclamation Facility disc filter project. Four, adopt resolution number 2019-2006, adopting the Land Use Assumptions and Infrastructure Improvements Plan, IIP, providing notice of intention to assess development fees and providing for corrections, severability, and an effective date, and set December 16th, 2019, as the date for a public hearing on the adoption of the proposed development fees calculated from the plan. Five, approve the fiscal year 2020 budget transfers. Six, approve the expenditure of funds for the Potable Water Storage Reservoir Rehabilitation Project at Booster Station Number 21. Seven, adopt ordinance number 2019-1450, amending section 11-1-34 fireworks of Goodyear City Code to allow for the use and sale of permissible consumer fireworks pursuant to state law and providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances in codes, corrections, severability, and an effective date. Eight, approve the acceptance of easements for the Hancock Canyon Trails Development. Nine, accept the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, UASI, grant award. And 10, approve the acceptance of a public utility sidewalk and access easement along a section of Osborne Road and Cotton Lane and authorize revisions to the final plat of First Park, PV 303, Phase 1.
Thank you. Does anyone on council wish for an item to be removed? Is anyone from the public? Seeing none, can I have a motion and a second to approve items two through 10?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Great. Okay. So first item in the public agenda is we have five public hearings tonight. So we'll roll through each one of them as we go through. The first item is a public hearing to approve a request for a comprehensive sign package and a use permit. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Planning manager Katie Wilkin to present.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, members of council. As stated, this is a request for both a comprehensive sign package and use permit to allow for a freeway pylon sign for the Roadrunner Harley-Davidson. We put both of the items on one staff report because the sole purpose of the comprehensive sign package is to fulfill the requirement of having a comprehensive sign package for a freeway pylon sign. So the development is located southwest of 159th Avenue and McDowell, located on the north side of I-10. As I know you're aware, they are currently building about a 20,000-square-foot building on a 6.2-acre site. As you can see from the site plan, the east portion is where they're developing, and what this shows is they are only currently developing on about half the site, so they do have additional land for future development. The proposed freeway pylon sign is 65 feet tall. It's a single-tenant sign with about 242 square footage of signage area. Our standards do require a 30-acre site with 1,000 feet of frontage to locate a sign. They are typically multi-tenant signs, and we typically don't allow pole signs. However, the zoning ordinance specifically says that council may grant deviations from these standards if extraordinary conditions exist, such as land ownership, adjacent development, and parcel configuration. Staffs reviewed the application and found that these extraordinary conditions do exist. So you can see the subject property here. Just to the east is the PB Bell Multifamily Development, which came to the council in the last year. And just east of that is the Pebble Creek Marketplace Development, which they just came for their freeway pylon sign about a month or two ago. To the west is the Cerebral East Development, and that goes all the way to Cerebral Avenue. So there's one development from 159th Avenue to Cerebral. Harley is a single development, and there is no opportunity for them to be on another sign. Furthermore, the corporate Harley-Davidson franchising requirements does not allow them to be on a multi-tenant sign. And that's not, you know, again, those aren't the rules of our franchisee who's locating this business here in Goodyear. Those are the corporate rules. They have very strict rules on how the logo is used, and this logo design with this pole design is the only design that they will allow. The economic impact of this site isn't dissimilar from a 30-acre commercial site. Furthermore, Harley-Davidson does serve a regional market, and they do hold events that serve a regional market where why finding can become very important. I also want to note that there have been deviations approved by council in other areas where extraordinary conditions exist, such as Airport Gateway of Goodyear. The Cancer Treatment Centers of America sign is currently the only sign constructed, but there were two additional signs approved that didn't meet the spacing requirements because of the needs of the area. Also, the Astoria Falls Regional Site has three signs approved currently. One is only constructed, but it has multiple signs approved. And as I stated before, the Pebble Creek Marketplace sign was already approved. The one you're looking at tonight is just shy of meeting the separation requirement. Now, Cerebral East does not have an approved sign. However, on many of their plans, they have shown plans for a freeway pylon sign. So whenever that site develops, we would anticipate them requesting a sign. That if this sign tonight is approved, that would cause that sign to not be able to meet those separation requirements. However, as you can see, there are other locations where those, we have three signs in a one-mile stretch. So staff believes that if you approve the sign tonight, a sign for Cerebral East could also be approved, and there wouldn't be, they wouldn't block each other, and all three signs could exist on that one-mile stretch. So we have not received any inquiries from the public regarding this request. As I stated, there were two deviations requested from the standards. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of both the comprehensive sign package and the use permit at their regular meeting. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, Katie. Thank you so much. Is the applicant here tonight? Yes. Okay. I'd ask you to come up and speak if the council has questions, unless you feel you need to add something to the staff report so far.
Hi. My name is Bill Coulter, and I'm the owner of the Harley-Davidson store.
Great. So if we've got questions, we'll fire them your way.
I'm sorry?
I said if we have questions, then we'll, if we've got questions for you, we can direct them to you then.
Sure.
Great. Okay. Are there any other speaker cards on this?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And can I have a motion and a second to approve the Harley-Davidson comprehensive sign package dated September 5th, 2019?
So moved. Second.
So we are open for council discussion, questions. Councilmember Pizzillo?
As a fellow two-wheel rider, I welcome you to the city. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. I echo what Joe said, but I'm really excited about your sign. While it's not like another sign we have in Goodyear, where you're located, you need to be seen from the freeway because that's where our riders come from, both east and west. And I think it's going to look really very cool to have it because it'll be kind of iconic for Goodyear. It's going to put us on the map. So thank you so much.
Sure. Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah. Once again, thank you so much. We're looking forward to having you in Goodyear as well. So welcome to the city. I know this is the only Harley-Davidson off of the I-10 in Maricopa County, so it'll be nice to have you in our city. I always, I already feel, to Councilman Campbell, I already feel cooler already as a city having Harley-Davidson in Goodyear. So definitely looking forward to it. I know a lot of people are very excited about this establishment coming to Goodyear. So welcome, and we're looking forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Great. And I guess I get to be the last cool guy. We are very excited to have you, and I know that this has been a very long process to finally get the building up, and now we'll finally get the sign in the ground and get this, to use a motorcycle euphemism, kick-started, and we'll get ready to go. So if there's no other discussion?
Kickstart.
Kickstart. That's old school. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. There is a second motion required on this particular item, and that is a motion for a second, a motion and a second to approve the use permit for the freeway pylon sign for Harley-Davidson, subject to stipulations.
So moved. Second.
Any council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Next public hearing is an item to consider, the Major General Plan Amendment for the Lakin Park area. I'd like to open the public hearing, and Long Range Planner Joe Schmitz will present.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. This is the Lakin Park Major General Plan Amendment, and I'm going to run through the presentation on this one, and I think we're going to dovetail right into the Perryville and Southern presentation since they are both somewhat related. The Lakin Park General Plan Amendment is a major general plan amendment in that it affects more than 160 acres. In fact, it covers 2,283 acres and is located south of MC-85, west of Cerebral Road, and north of the Gila River. There's changes to the land use categories proposed by city staff in cooperation with owners of about 39% of the area. 26% of the amendment area is also public land. This was, this area, which you can see outlined in red on the aerial photograph, was proposed previously for residential development. And when a rezoning request was filed by the property owners in this area, we discussed that a non-residential use might be more appropriate, given the fact that the SR Loop 303 and SR-30 freeways are planned to go through this area. Of the area that's proposed for change, 1,200 acres are in the city limits, and 1,000 acres are in the county. Both areas are predominantly agricultural in use right now. There are three changes that are being proposed. One are changes to the land use categories, changing them from, predominantly from residential to non-residential land use categories. Secondly is changing some land uses from residential to open space because of their location in the area that's designated a floodway for the Gila River. And then third, modification of the freeway alignments for Loop 303 and SR-30 to match the recently completed ADOT Design Concept Report and Environmental Assessment. The area is heavily impacted by the proposed freeways, as you can see from this map. And it's likewise heavily impacted by the floodplain and floodway. The floodplain is represented in red, and the floodway is represented in the gray crosshatching. This chart provides information as to what the current number of acres are in each of the current land use categories and what's proposed in the proposed amendment. You can see that the scenic neighborhood category has, drops by 742 acres. The neighborhood category drops by over 600. The business and commerce increases by 256, and the industrial likewise increases by 685. Open space by 428. So you can see the shift from the residential land use categories to the non-residential categories. This slide gives you a feel for what the existing land use looks like. You can see the yellowish-orange color here. That's neighborhoods, which is usually traditional, single-family type of development with some multifamily. This lighter yellow is a scenic neighborhood category that is about one unit per acre. The maps to the right are the proposed land use categories, and you can see north of the freeway and then east of the freeway, this area is now predominantly industrial, and below it is business and commerce. And then the open space area has also expanded. This one overlays, this is the neighborhood area previously, and the proposed land uses are underneath that, so you can see where the shift occurred from neighborhood to industrial. The reason this land use change was pursued and the general plan amendment pursued is because it was felt the land uses, non-residential land uses would be more compatible with the freeways proposed, the railroad, the highway that is MC-85, high-voltage electric transmission lines, floodplain, and gas transmission line. The change will increase employment land use, and that benefits the jobs-to-housing ratio in the general plan. And frankly, the timing is good right now due to the market demand for employment uses. Public participation on this item, as we are required by state law, we sent this out to adjoining jurisdictions and other state agencies for a 60-day review period, which ended back in September 6th. The first Planning Commission public hearing was held on September 25th, and a second public hearing was held on October 16th. The latter being, I mean, the former being at the Las Briesas Elementary School to satisfy the requirement of having one public hearing at a location other than your regular meeting place for the Planning Commission. So tonight, we present to you Resolution 2019-1999, which would approve the Lakin Park Major General Plan Amendment, as is detailed in that resolution. Continuing on, the Perryville and Southern Area Minor General Plan Amendment. This one has 868 acres, and it's west of MC-85, south of Union Pacific Railroad tracks, and east of Perryville Road. There are no land use changes proposed in this amendment. The only change proposed is to the roadway plan to reflect the plan location of the SR-303 Loop and SR-30. This is the amendment area outlined in red, which, as you can see, lies in the area mostly west of MC-85 and east of Perryville Road. The current land use category for this area is business and commerce, and as I said, there are no changes proposed to that. The only change is to reflect the alignment of the freeways once again, as determined by the recent DCR and EPA that was done by ADOT. We did not have a 60-day review for this, as it's not required for a minor amendment. There was a public hearing by the Planning Commission on September 25th. And we held a second public hearing because of the relationship of this change to the Lakin Park change, even though the second one was not required. So we're recommending this one to you as well, to approve the general, minor general plan amendment for the Perryville and Southern area by adopting Resolution 2019-2000. That concludes my remarks, and I, at appropriate time, will be available for questions.
Great, Joe. Thank you so much. The city is the applicant in both items 12 and 13, so there is no applicant to speak of. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Vice Mayor. Taylor Earl said he would speak if necessary.
Mr. Earl, do you feel it's necessary? No? Okay. Thank you. No other speaker cards? Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we're going to take each of these items separately. So I'm asking the city clerk to please read Resolution Number 2019-1999 by title only.
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1999, approving a major amendment to the Goodyear 2025 general plan for the Lakin Park area, containing 2,283 acres located south and east of MC-85, west of Cerebral Road, and north of the Gila River, to amend figure 8.1 land use and transportation plan map in Chapter 8 of the general plan by changing the land use designations on certain lands adjacent to planned freeways from residential to non-residential, changing the land use designations on certain lands in the floodway residential to open space, and revising the alignment of the planned Loop 303 and SR-30 freeways to reflect the location depicted in the final location design concept report prepared by the Arizona Department of Transportation, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk titled "Lakin Park Area Major GPA" and providing for an effective date.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2019-1999?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any council discussion? Councilmember Keno?
I just wanted to thank staff for being forward-looking and identifying this area as a place for rezoning. I think it's a far more appropriate use of that land with the freeway access and the increase of open space. All in all, I just think it's well-suited, so thank you very much.
Great. Anyone else? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Great. Next is the public hearing for the Minor General Plan Amendment on Perryville and Southern, which we've already heard the presentation from Joe on. Nothing else to add, I presume? Okay. Nothing else to add, and the city being the applicant, there is no applicant. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor. Just confirming you did open the public hearing, correct?
I did.
Okay.
I did bang the gavel.
Thank you. I missed it. Sorry.
I was warned about bang, gavel-banging earlier. So we are, no other speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Great. Any else? Anyone in the audience like to speak? Okay. With that, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2019-2000 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-2000, approving a minor amendment to the Goodyear 2025 general plan for the Perryville and Southern area to amend figure 8.12 land use and transportation plan map in Chapter 8 of the general plan by revising the alignment of the planned Loop 303 and SR-30 freeways to reflect the location depicted in the final location design concept report prepared by the Arizona Department of Transportation, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk titled "Perryville and Southern Area Minor GPA" and providing for an effective date.
Great. Can I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2019-2000?
So moved.
Second. Councilmember Campbell made the motion. Councilmember Pizzillo made the second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Great. Next is a public hearing item to consider a rezone for the Lakin property. I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and Planner 3, Alex Latinsky, will be presenting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, council. Good evening. Joe gave a great introduction to this project, so thanks to him. This should be pretty straightforward. The request is to rezone approximately 696 acres. The property is currently zoned agricultural urban, and it's located south of MC-85 on the east and west sides of Cotton Lane. To the north is the Hudamaki, or to the north is MC-85 and Union Pacific
plan for the Perryville and Southern area to amend figure 8.12 land use and transportation plan map in Chapter 8 of the general plan by revising the alignment of the planned loop 303 and SR 30 freeways to reflect the location depicted in the final location design concept report prepared by the Arizona Department of Transportation, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk titled Perryville and Southern Area Minor GPA and providing for an effective date.
Great, can I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2019-2000?
So moved.
Second. Councilmember Campbell made the motion, Councilmember Pizzillo made the second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Great. Next is a public hearing item to consider a rezone for the Lakin property. I will go ahead and open the public hearing and Planner 3, Alex Latinsky, will be presenting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Council, good evening. Joe gave a great introduction to this project, so thanks to him. This should be pretty straightforward. The request is to rezone approximately 696 acres. The property is currently zoned agricultural urban and it's located south of MC-85 on the east and west sides of Cotton Lane. To the north is the Hudamaki, or to the north is MC-85 and Union Pacific Railroad. Then north of that is Hudamaki, which is owned part of the El Cidro PAD. And then we have the Amazon and Macy's Distribution Centers, also Anderson Windows, which is currently under construction within the Goodyear Crossing Industrial Park. On the northeast corner of this site, I've identified Goodyear 82. This area is currently zoned preliminary PAD under a PAD known as the Riverside Park PAD that was zoned in 2005. That PAD proposed the property to be developed as residential. However, preliminary PAD is not final zoning, so for anything to develop at this point, a rezone would need to be take, or would need to take place. That being said, the property owners have been in contact with the city, similarly in attempts to rezone the property within, or to industrial, which you'll likely be seeing within the next year. To the south is the Gila River and then to the west is a county island and that future 30 and 303 exchange. As Joe mentioned earlier, the applicant had originally submitted the application to rezone to residential property, which is in line with the existing general plan designation. Staff did express concerns about the development restrictions on the site, including the 30 running through the property, the electrical ionism and all of the site constrictions, restrictions. The applicant did provide this exhibit in their project narrative, which does outline all of those constraints that they have on the site. Based on this, the applicant agreed with city staff on the recommendation to rezone the property to industrial uses as opposed to the residential, which brings us here tonight. So the rezoning does include, does consist of a planned area development, which we'll call the CP Lakin PAD. It includes 600, approximately 644 acres of industrial. There's 35 acres of flex zone, which allows for commercial and industrial uses. The flex zone was created in order to allow commercial development along Cotton Lane or continue the industrial development to encroach into these boundaries without having to lock in zoning at this time. Within the flex zone boundary, the PAD does allow for a future fire station, which was previously discussed with the fire department. It's not currently a committed site, but if the city does decide to utilize this location, there wouldn't be no need for a future rezoning action. So whichever use is utilized within the flex zone, the corresponding development standards would apply. Oh, there's also 15 acres on the west side of the property that is designated for multifamily. Due to the restricted access to the parcel, there's limited feasibility of use on this site, so the applicant and staff agreed that multifamily would be an appropriate use. It does utilize the MF24 district standards in case they'd like to do higher density development on that site, but it doesn't restrict the minimum. So if it is a single-family residential, or a single-family rental product, we did include design guidelines based on council's recommendation for design standards. And then also, one thing to note, this area is, the multifamily area is in the portion of business and commerce, which Joe proposed in the general plan amendment, and it does allow for multifamily residential. These are the development standards of the districts in the PAD. The multifamily and commercial districts are reflective of what's currently required in the city zoning ordinance, but the industrial district standards are modified to increase the maximum height. We did utilize an alternative citizen review process by sending notification to all the property owners within 500 feet of the property. To date, staff nor the applicant has heard any feedback about the request. With the approval of the general plan amendment, which was presented to you by Joe, the request will be in conformance with the general plan. Staff has found the request to be in compliance with the engineering and zoning standards of the city. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on October 16th and staff recommends approval subject to the stipulations included in the ordinance provided to you. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here and available for questions or a presentation as well. And that's all, thank you.
Awesome, thank you, Alex. Is Mr. Carnwell here? I know Mr. Earl is, but...
Yes.
If you wish to speak, please feel free, but if not, we'll keep going, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Do we have any speaker cards?
Just the one.
Nope. Thank you, Mr. Earl. Seeing none, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2019-2003 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-2003 declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk titled Official Supplementary Zoning Map 8-14, or 18-14 CP Lakin Park Master Legal Descriptions and CP Lakin Park PAD Overlay Regulatory Standards Book dated September 2019.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2019-2003?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Keno, second by Councilmember Pizzillo. Any council discussion? Councilmember Loretano?
Just for the public that's watching it, why we're not asking a lot of questions is I think it's important to let the public know that we've been briefed on this and since staff was applicant, we've been given a lot of information ahead of time on this, so just so people aren't wondering what's going on.
Good point. Any other comments?
No, just to echo, we've gotten prelim already on this, so very familiar with this particular project.
Great. So you know other comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
And then will the city clerk, we have two votes on this, will the city clerk please read ordinance Number 2019-1451 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1451 rezoning approximately 696 acres of land located south of MC-85, east and west of South Cotton Lane from agricultural urban AU to a mix of industrial, commercial and multifamily residential uses with a planned area development pad overlay, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement corrections and severability, providing for an effective date and providing for penalties.
Great. Can I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2019-1451?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Campbell, second by Councilmember Hampton. Any council discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Great. And then our last public hearing item is to consider minor general amendment revising Growth Policy D. Open the public hearing and Joe Schmidt, our long-range planner, is back presenting.
And we've got the wrong slide up. We'll try one more time. While they're looking for that, I'll introduce this. This is a minor general plan amendment to revise a section of the general plan that deals with growth. The current policy D under Objective GD-2-2 discourages rezoning of land to higher intensities outside of the growth areas that are designated in the plan until infrastructure planning is in place and necessary resources are available. This particular, and this is a map of where the growth areas are, they're, did I do that? Try this again. There's a mouse. So the growth areas are outlined with circles or spheres and crosshatched. And really, those are areas where growth should be encouraged, should be promoted. And growth on the fringe was considered a little, a little more difficult because of infrastructure and planning for services. So as noted on the slide, the original intent was to discourage development where infrastructure planning had not occurred in areas where resources and services weren't yet available. This came to the forefront during discussions of the Rainbow Valley area and a work session was held on January 29th of 2018 with the council and staff at that meeting was directed to prepare a revision to the policy. The concern was that it was too restrictive and could actually prohibit growth. So this is the rewritten policy. Basically, it says discourage rezoning of land to higher intensity, but we took out the outside of the growth areas portion. And it says further until infrastructure planning is in place and resources are available unless a plan to develop the infrastructure necessary to adequately serve the area is identified during the rezoning process and its implementation in a timely manner is guaranteed by appropriate stipulations and development agreements. In effect, I believe that's what we did in response to the proposed development in the Rainbow Valley area. So the policy reflects the action that was subsequently taken by the council. The policy still discourages development in areas that don't have infrastructure, but it allows rezonings to proceed provided under certain conditions. First, that an infrastructure plan is developed concurrently with the rezoning process by the developer and then appropriate stipulations and development agreements are put in place to ensure implementation of that plan in a timely manner. So it clarifies that rezoning in such areas is not prohibited. It does explain that the entitlement process is allowed to proceed subject to certain conditions. Development is still responsible for absorbing the cost of development, or cost of growth, which is expressed in policy GD-2-1, and it clarifies the policy without making it inconsistent with other general plan policies. So initially, I think there was a concern that this might be a major amendment. Turned out that a text change to a policy is actually a minor amendment, so this is why it was processed as a minor amendment. Notice of this minor amendment was sent to the development community. We have not received any comments on it and we held the public hearing before the Planning Commission on October 16th and there were no comments at the meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of five to zero and the staff recommendation is to approve Resolution 2019-2001 to make this proposed change. That concludes my presentation. I'll stand for any questions at this point.
Great, Joe, thank you. I also understand that this, the city is the applicant in this, so we have...
Yes, we are.
...no one to hear from. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Any from the audience like to speak? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2019-2001 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-2001 approving a minor amendment to the Goodyear 2025 general plan to amend the text in policy D to Objective GD-2-2 of Chapter 5, Physical Growth and Development, to allow rezoning of land to higher intensities outside of designated growth areas provided a plan for developing infrastructure necessary to support the development is in place at the time of rezoning and its implementation guaranteed and providing for an effective date.
Can I have a motion and a second to, and a second to approve Resolution 2019-2001?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Loretano, second by Councilmember Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Pizzillo?
I think I heard it right, I just want to make sure, Joe. If they come in for a rezoning of a piece of land and they have a plan for the infrastructure and they lay that out, that doesn't prohibit the rezoning to happen, is that what I'm hearing?
Vice Mayor Stip, Councilman Pizzillo, that's correct. It basically expressly states that if the infrastructure planning is not in place, that it's basically the obligation of the developer to do that planning since it hasn't been done already. So that's one of the points that we clarified in the revision.
Okay. But it's a plan. They got to have a plan on how they're going to deliver the infrastructure, I assume.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any questions over here? Councilmember Loretano?
Thank you, I appreciate the city coming forward with this because I think it's very important that we maintain that flexibility with our developers and obviously work with them to get the plans that we need, so I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Joe, I'd also like to echo the thanks. I know that this is, this puts quite a strain on both, or on all of development services, I shouldn't call any one of them out because it puts a strain on everybody, but it's been very important for us and I think we've seen the benefits of what happened with what we did in the Rainbow Valley area and how productive that whole process was, so appreciate bringing that forward to us tonight. So with no other discussion, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
We're done with public hearings. All right, so we'll now move on to the business portion of our agenda and like to remind council, if we can, to wait for a motion and a second before we begin discussions. The next item on the business agenda is to consider approving Resolution 2019-1999, accepting two grants from the Bureau of Land Management. Long-range planner Joe Schmitz will present.
Vice Mayor or council, this, as you duly noted, is the process we need to go through to accept the grant of right-of-way from the BLM for the Sonoran Valley Parkway project and I'll briefly go through the project with you and then present the recommendation for approval of the resolution. So the project was started in 2008 with the goal of connecting the northern part of Goodyear with the southern part in the area around Mobile. The project proposes a right-of-way that'd be 250 feet in width, 15 and a half miles long from Riggs Road to SR 238. The initial project would, is designed to construct two lanes that would be expandable to six lanes ultimately. The location of the roadway would be about 380 feet east of the Sonoran Desert National Monument, so if you go out into that area, there's not a lot of landmarks to figure out where you are except for the gas pipeline, so you can usually see the gas pipeline and then the electric transmission line. So in this little drawing, that is not cooperating, my arrow's not cooperating. So the gas pipeline is basically on the western edge, then you have the SRP easement with the electrical towers and then the roadway would be east of that. In order to obtain a right-of-way from the BLM, you have to follow the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, and that also imposes a requirement preparing an environmental impact statement for the project. An environmental impact statement, I've showed you this slide before and it seemed like we were stuck a couple boxes back, but we finally made it to the end of the process and the issuance of a Record of Decision. The EIS identified seven alternative alignments and then detailed analysis of three alternatives and two sub-alternatives. The draft EIS, even though it was issued in July of 2013, it didn't get to final status until April of this year. At the end of April, the Record of Decision was issued, which effectively approved the EIS by the BLM. On August 15th, the right-of-grant offers were provided to the city and then after some further discussions and clarifications, we are, we received the revised right-of-way grant offers that are presented for your consideration tonight. The project is needed because there is no roadway connection between northern and southern Goodyear. We annexed the property in the Mobile area and eventually we're going to need to have a connection. And obtaining the land from the federal government is the first step in that process. We cannot use eminent domain to get right-of-way from the federal government. We have to follow their rules, their procedures and basically talk them into granting it to us. And that's what we did in this process. By following the NEPA process, it demonstrates the roadway can be built without adverse impacts or at least impacts that can't be mitigated and it maintains the eligibility of the project for future federal funding. It also establishes the preferred alignment not only across the federal lands, but also some private lands and state land in the area that would allow us to continue to pursue right-of-way and know where the roadway is going to be. In terms of its relationship to the I-11 process, the I-11 project is going through a Tier 1 environmental analysis right now that you probably are well aware of. During that process, we met with the I-11 project team and they did not... During that process, we met with the I-11 project team, and they did not see that our roadway would be any detriment to the I-11 project and supported to its completion. The I-11 alignment would be a 2,000-foot-wide corridor at present within a one-mile BLM-designated transportation corridor that has already been identified by the BLM. And it's expected that the, so Sonoran Valley Parkway and I-11 would run parallel in that corridor, but there's room for both. In terms of the next steps, we would need to obtain right-of-way from the Amaranth developer. Combined with the right-of-way we got with, from the BLM, we would have 86% of the right-of-way that's needed. There's an additional 32 acres that would come from state lands and about 32 acres from private ownership. But even if the funds were available for construction today, additional design work is needed. We have to, we need to survey the right-of-way limits and the sub-alternative G, which was not identified in the initial proposal but was selected by the BLM as the preferred alignment because of potential interference of the other alignment with a cultural site. We will need to conduct wildlife surveys and complete the design documents, and a new plan of development will have to be prepared and submitted to the BLM, and then finally we would obtain a notice to proceed from the BLM, and then construction could start. So we're still at the beginning of the process, but we are much better off than we were before we started this effort. As I noted, obtaining the right-of-way is a significant step, first step in this process. It does not commit the city to proceed necessarily, but it does establish location of the right-of-way on non-federal lands. So we are recommending to you tonight to adopt the Resolution 2019-1997 and to formally accept the grant of right-of-way from the BLM.
Great, Joe, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak? Seeing none, will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2019-1997 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1997, accepting two grants of right-of-way from the Bureau of Land Management over BLM lands for the Sonoran Valley Parkway from the intersection of Riggs Road and Rainbow Valley Road to SR 238 in the Mobile area of Goodyear.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2019-1997?
Same move.
Got a motion from Councilmember Hampton and a second by Councilmember Campbell. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Campbell?
So, Joe, it's taken us 11 years to get this far, and I know how diligent you have worked on this project. When I came on council nine years ago, you and I went down to Mobile or to Maricopa to a public hearing to talk about the deer and the owls and anything else that might get in our way to build that road, but we realized how important it is to connect the city of Goodyear with the Mobile area. It not only gives our residents in the Estrella Mountain area another way to travel south than just coming down the hill to where we are now. So I know it's probably going to take us another 10 or 15 years to get this completed, but we do thank you for all of your diligent work. You've been really so important for this project, and you've just been a wealth of information. I've called you once, I've called you 100 times asking about this project, and where were we and what could we do to hurry along? Because we were waiting for our environmental report, and we didn't think we'd ever get it, and then we got it, and it was favorable, so we're delighted with that. But thank you so much. This is so important to the growth of this city because it will totally open up the entire area up in Mobile on 238, and it will give us the connectivity that we need so desperately. So thank you.
Thank you. Great. Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, I'm going to echo a lot, but yeah, thank you. I know it's been a lot of hard work, and it's a long project, and to Councilman Campbell's point as well, this will definitely add a lot of activity to our city. I've driven along that gas line road, so it'll be nice to be able to connect the city completely to one another as well, to be able to help out with, I mean, just some neat things to see back there as well tourism-wise and also just connect our city also. So thank you so much for continuing towards this. I know we're not done, so, but thank you for continuing, keeping on with it. So thank you very much.
Joe, thank, this was, this is, I go back to your slide with all your boxes and circles. I think we're back to the first square, and then we're going to zigzag through the rest of the process, but this is really the start of the future, the next, the next wave of the growth in our city, and we couldn't have done it and gotten started without, without this. I'm going to ask you to stand there while we vote because this is Joe's last presentation. Fitting that it was this one too, but fitting before, so I'd like to ask for a roll call vote and then carry on from there.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So as I mentioned, this is Joe's last time presenting before us, which is shocking in and of itself because since I've been on council the same time as Councilmember Campbell, it has always been Joe. And then, then the cast grew from, from Joe and everyone else over time. And Joe, I'd like to give each of the council members an opportunity to, you know, obviously give our thanks to you, and then if you're up for it, I'd love to get a picture with you and council and anyone from your family that you'd like.
Thank you.
We'd really like that. So who wants to kick off?
Vice Mayor Stip, I would be remiss if I didn't first acknowledge SWCA, the environmental consultants who did the brunt of the hard work on the roadway project, and the cooperation of the district office of the BLM. I don't know if anybody's here tonight. Well, I wanted to double check because they said they might come, and I did want to express my appreciation to them for all the assistance they gave us.
Well, that's great.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Keno? I'm going to bounce back and forth, by the way.
Okay. Well, Joe, I just want to, I've, I've been on the shortest amount of time, but to see your impact, and even this one, this is a legacy project, and this is just one of many. And the work that you've done, how you've poured yourself into your career is going to have long-lasting impacts on us, so just want to say well done, and we appreciate everything you've done, and I hope that your next season of life brings you great joy.
Thank you. Councilmember Hampton?
Yes, Joe, thank you very much for your years of service as well. I have always appreciated your professionalism and your work here. I know, just like, like, yeah, the new one, yeah. Yeah. So like Laura said as well, that, yeah, I know your, your impact will be, will be felt for a long time for us at the city as well, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Campbell?
Well, gosh, Joe, I'm not going to tell you goodbye, but I, I just can't even begin to tell you how much we appreciate all that you've done and all of the cooperation you've given every single member on this council and our mayor and all of the staff. You've always been willing to answer our questions, as dumb as they might be, and explain to us why we can't do what we thought we could do, but we know that you've always had the goodness and the, the love of the city first and foremost in everything that you've done. And I don't know that we'll ever be able to thank you for all that you have given to this city. Like Laura said, the, the legacy project, this is one of many because your finger has been in so many projects that have come to this city. And I know Katie and her staff are going to miss you dearly because you really have contributed so very much, and to your precious family, we thank them for sharing you with us. We're just going to miss you terribly, and we wish you the best of luck and enjoy your retirement.
Councilmember Loretano?
You can't retire. We started working together when I was on planning and zoning, and you are, you're like an encyclopedia of everything. It's just your knowledge of the city, of all the land uses and all the growth, it's amazing, and we are so going to miss you. Just even like this project that you've just kept at, because this, when Amaranth was, we took Mobile into the city and it was going to be different, and then you kept at it, and you know, so that we will have that, you know, I'll probably be long gone by the time it's actually built, but you know, it's a process, and you saw the future, you said, you know, we'll just get it in place so we have it, and that's how you've looked at everything. It's like the big picture, and just have a wonderful retirement with your family. It's so well deserved, but we will miss you. Like I said, you know so much about our city, and you've given so much to our citizens, so thank you, and best of luck to you. Enjoy.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Well, Joe, we go way back. I remember working with you as a staffer when I was in the budget office and sitting up here on city council. So I wish you well on your retirement. I thank you for all you've done. Trust me, I tried to do it in 2008. Retirement's a little overblown. You'll find something to do. It may not be an eight-to-five, but you'll find something to do to keep you occupied, but I appreciate all your efforts. I appreciate we worked well together. Again, we go way, way back, and again, good luck in the future, whatever you decide to do. Take care, Joe.
Joe, I know, I know the mayor is sad that she's not here to wish you, wish you off into, into retirement, and so from, from her, I know that she certainly extends a grateful good luck and as you move forward. From, from my perspective, my first conversation with you, which was in the hallway outside of this building, was following your, the medical marijuana had just passed in the state, and we were rezoning, going through getting that all done, and I was making comment to Joe about how apropos it was that he picked out green slides for his background. Of course, Joe had no idea that there was a correlation there between the two, so, but everything forward, I, I think about the implications that we all make on the city and where our signatures are and where our fingerprints are, and yours are everywhere. The city will not, will not go into the future, either drive around today or 10 years from now without a signature of yours on it. And as a resident, I'm very grateful for that. You always protected us from ourselves, which is always a good thing. So good luck in, in your retirement. I greatly appreciate it. I'll turn the floor over to you, and then we'd like to give you that opportunity for a photo if you'd like.
Thank you. Well, they, they say that if you find a job you love, you'll never work a day in your life, and I must be one of the happiest guys in the world. I've been doing this for 44 years.
Oh, my gosh.
And I figured that I've been to over 2,300 Council Planning and Zoning Commission meetings in that time, and I never thought I'd actually get to the end, but, and it's kind of a shame because I was just starting to get good at it. But no one does, does things by themselves, and I've been blessed, I've been blessed with my family. My wife Candy is here tonight. She's been with me the whole way, and she's made me the, a better person. And we've been married for 45 years, so she had to chip, chip away at that for a long time before she got me close to being right. It won't be perfect, but getting closer. And the staff, I've been blessed to work with such great staff members. It wasn't always peaches and cream and happy times, but lately in particular, the staff is tremendous. If I start naming names, I know I'm going to forget somebody, so I'm not going to go down that path, with the exception of Katie, because Katie has been the best boss I could ever ask for, for these last few years. Of course, I'll take credit for that too because I hired her. I picked a good one, even though she's from Highland, Indiana. I went to Ball State, and their team beat my Northern Illinois Huskies this year, so. But it's been a great run. I'd probably try to do it for another 44 if I had it in me, but I don't think I do. So I have to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve. I've been proud to be a member of the Goodyear community and the organization, and I appreciate all the kind words that you had for me tonight, and thank you.
Joe, yep. Are you up for a photo? Okay, next on the agenda is Item 17, which is, consider a preliminary plat for Elwood Logistics Center. Planner 3, Karen Carver Craver is presenting. Sorry.
I've been answering to both all my life.
I know.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I should know better.
Good evening, council. The Elwood Logistics Center property is 85 acres, and it's located at the southeast corner of Elwood Street and Cerebral Avenue, and it's zoned I-1 light industrial with a PAD overlay, and that was rezoned in 2013. There is a previous plat approval on this property. In June of 2008, the city council approved the Cerebral Crossing Business Park with multiple lots, 17 to be exact, 17 small lots, but that final plat was not recorded, and the subdivision regs at that time did not expire unrecorded final plats. So the council approval of that actually remains intact. So the first thing that we're asking you to do tonight is to rescind that final plat approval so the new preliminary plat can proceed, and the commission recommended that you do that as well. The current preliminary plat before you is to consolidate eight parcels into one lot, and that will facilitate the development of Elwood Logistics Center, which is a 1.3 million square foot spec distribution warehouse. And site plan approval for that warehouse was granted in September of 2018, and it's currently under building permit review. And staff in the Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending that you rescind the previous final plat and recommend approval of the Elwood Logistics preliminary plat, subject to the stipulations in your staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant representatives are also here.
Great. Would the applicant representatives feel a need to speak? Seeing none, are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, can I have a motion and a second to approve the rescission of the unrecorded Cerebral Crossing Business Park final plat approved by council on June 23rd, 2008, and approve the preliminary plat for the Elwood Logistics Center?
Same move. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell, a second by Councilmember Loretano. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Hampton?
I think I've already had this question answered before, but this can all, this has necessarily be a warehouse. It can be other uses as well, correct? Or is this going to be for, we already identified it's going to be for distribution?
Vice Mayor, if I may, Councilman Hampton, it can be any industrial, light industrial uses, but the building has been designed with the overhead dock doors on the north and south sides. and south sides of the buildings, and some office components on each of the corners of the buildings. It could be all one user, it could be a couple of users, it could be four users. But, the design of the building lends itself to distribution warehouse.
Okay. And that's what it was before. I remember I lived in that neighborhood just north of there. And I remember it first came to that neighborhood and requests. And there were some things that were moved and some things that, that changed because of the input from that neighborhood. So, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great. Councilmember Keno?
So, is the 1.3 million the largest so far in Goodyear?
It will be, yes. The existing Amazon building further to the west is just under 1 million square feet. So, a little bit bigger than that.
And then I understand that you have stipulations to mitigate the, a buffer between the residential and the industrial?
Yes. As councilman Hampton alluded to, we had a very extensive public process when that rezoning happened. And the neighborhood actually came out and, in support of the rezoning and in support of the building that was going to be done and all the landscaping that was committed to.
So, all those requirements are still intact?
They still are.
Thank you.
Great. Sign nun, Karen, thank you. Any other council discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item 18 is to consider an amendment to the Airport Gateway at Goodyear Comprehensive Sign Program. And Karen will present again.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. CTCAs is part of the Airport Gateway at Goodyear Comprehensive Sign Package. An airport gateway extends from, there we are, extends from Bullard Avenue down to Van Buren, up 143rd, across Celebrate Life Way, and up to the I-10. Recently, CTCAs purchased the 40 acres just to the east of the hospital site. The applicant is requesting to amend the Airport Gateway Comprehensive Sign Program to add that 40 acres into the land area covered by the sign program. And they've also asked to receive approval to locate an off-premise CTCAs sign on that 40 acres. And this is that sign, very much obviously a, a Cancer Treatment of America Center sign. But, I will point out to you the tenant panels on it. The sign was considered an off-premise sign because although it's owned, the property on which it will be located is owned by Cancer Treatment Center of America, it's not on the hospital site. And typically, the off-premise signs are not allowed. But, how staff could support it and how the Planning and Zoning Commission could support it was that it would serve as a multi-tenant sign for that 40 acres when commercial development occurs on there. So, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending approval of the sign package amendment to add the 40 acres and then to allow that off-premise sign, subject to stipulations.
Great. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak? Okay. Sign nun, may I have a motion and a second to approve the amendment dated October 2019 to the Airport Gateway at Goodyear Comprehensive Sign Program, subject to stipulations?
No move. Second.
Motion by councilmember Campbell, a second by councilmember Loretano. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Campbell.
Oh, Karen, thank you very much for your presentation. And I am really glad to know that CTCAs wants to put a sign on that property, because they have owned that property for some time. And we're hopeful that someday they will develop it. And it would make sense to have the sign there and then address for tenants. In fact, if they add more services that they do at their hospital. We're so proud to have CTCAs in, in Goodyear. And anything we can do to help them with their signage, I'm, I'm grateful that we're able to do that. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Loretano?
I want to echo that. I think it's very important to have this and obviously the Harley-Davidson before, is to have the signage for, you know, our businesses, our hospitals, so people know where they're going. I think that's a, a very good thing to have. And I, I think it shows that the city is business friendly. And we want to make sure that people know where these businesses are and can get to them easily. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Sign nun, Karen, again, thank you. CTCAs, again, we're just thrilled that you're part of our community. And thank you for everything that you do for us. So, with all that behind us, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item 19 on the business agenda is to consider a preliminary plat for Abel Ranch. Planner three, Alex Latinsky. Is this part of the exercise program? You guys keep coming back and forth. Alex Latinsky will present.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The Abel Ranch preliminary plat is located on the southeast corner of Camelback and Citrus Roads.
Excuse me, Alex, can you get closer to the mic?
Yep. Sorry about that. It's located on the south, or southeast corner of Camelback and Citrus Roads. The property is just east of the Sadea Community. The, the council did approve the rezoning for the property to convert from agricultural urban to, excuse me, the 2018 rezone, rezone the property from PAD zoning to R16 and AU agricultural urban. The carved-out piece is the Citrus Farms property, which also was rezoned R16 in 2018. The preliminary plat consists only of this area in red. So, that this second area is the agricultural urban designation. There's 217 acres included in this preliminary plat, which consists of 451 lots, all of a mix of lot product, 55, 60, 75s, and then the agricultural urban property. To conclude, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with the city's engineering and zoning standards. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval on the 16th of October. That concludes my presentation. And someone from the, from Hilgarth Wilson is here if you have any additional questions. Thank you.
Great. Alex, thank you. Do we have any speaker cards on this?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anyone from the audience wish to speak? Sign nun, can I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Abel Ranch, subject to stipulations?
No move.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Pizzillo and a second by councilmember Keno. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Hampton.
I said a quick question. On the northeast corner of that, how close is that to REI? I can't see it. The map, it seems just all agricultural. So, I was just curious. Is it not even close? Because it's not on the map? Is it still all there? I just know that isn't accurate.
Correct. So, just, this east of this is Citrus, or, I'm sorry, Cotton Lane. Cotton Lane. And then on the east side of Cotton Lane.
Okay. I thought there was a little space. I just couldn't, some of it rolled in so quickly. Some of the maps are out of date. So, I just was curious. So, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. No one else? Alex, thank you for the presentation. Will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item 20 on the business agenda is to consider adopting resolution number 2019-1974 and ordinance number 2019-1437 regarding the city's technical building codes. Randall? Sorry. It's all, knowing you as Randy.
And the fire codes. So...
It's all in there. But, Randy Westacott, the chief building official, will present.
So, let me say, this isn't going to be as cool as the Harley-Davidson sign. And I hope that I don't have to have the dogged determination of Joe Schmitz for the Sonora Valley Parkway. But, we'll give it a shot. Figure out. Okay. Here we go. So, who knew what they wanted to be when they were nine years old? I'm not going to tell you that I did. But, as a young boy visiting my grandparents in Chicago, walking the sidewalks of Chicago, looking up at this skyline, I was fascinated with buildings and what it takes. So, why do we have building codes? Who benefits? And what does it take to get us there? So, we have building codes. They promote public safety. They give us a reasonable level of safety and protection for public health, general welfare, and property. You can see here a couple of pictures. The one on the bottom is after Hurricane Sandy. And, you know, as a result of that, we've had some improvements to the codes in coastal flooding areas that have provided for the preservation of properties that are built in these areas. The picture on the top there is, is a picture of a fully engulfed garage in a residential setting where the separation between the garage and the dwelling unit are performing properly to give the residents of that dwelling time to get out of the structure. Who benefits? Well, the city, contractors, and the community. They benefit in a number of ways. The city of Goodyear benefits by showing that we're a, we're a player in the new community, moving forward with the latest and greatest building safety codes and fire codes. We're staying up to task on those and providing the development community a sense of understanding that, that we're being progressive and moving forward with the adoption of the latest codes. We attract companies like Microsoft. And, you know, we have a great training facility for baseball. And as long as we stay current with the codes and show the development community that we're being up to, up to date on those things, it's going to help us to continue to attract those types of, of businesses. And with that comes more development. And with that comes more opportunities. So, contractors benefit. Contractors benefit because it gives them a regional consistency. It allows them to use innovative technology as they develop their new projects that they're bringing here to the city. And it also provides them the opportunity, say a national developer who has a particular plan that they use. Well, these companies are up to date on the most current codes. And so, when they come here, they can use that plan, make some minor modifications, maybe for our community. And, and then they don't have to go through the cost of all the design to redesign to a, a different code cycle. And our community benefits. Our community benefits because we continue to provide them a safe community, safe structures with the latest and greatest technology. And that promotes development. And with development comes more jobs, more opportunities, more community activities, because our community is growing. So, how did we get here tonight? Well, it started way back in May. We posted some, some draft codes on our webpage. We reached out to our development community. We sent an email to some 400-plus people in our development community and invited them to a development forum. Had collaboration with the Home Builders Association and the Arizona Multi-Housing Association. We've reached out to Valley Partnership. And we've received, you know, good support from both Valley Partnership, Arizona Multi-Housing Authority. And we've also received a letter of recommendation from the Home Builders Association. And Jackson Moll is here representing the home builders this evening. And I believe he's put a, a card in to speak. We shared drafts. We spent countless hours collaborating with, with our team from FIRE. And we have a couple representatives of the Fire Department here with us this evening as well. Mike Bruni, our new fire marshal, and chief, Battalion Chief Brian Duhl. And we spent a lot of time with those folks and my team collaborating on, on what do we need to do to bring these codes forward. And we've also, we added, kind of last minute, we added some specific code language related to energy storage in the fire codes, because we, we understand the technology is changing. And it's changing so rapidly, it's hard to keep pace with it. And so, there are some, there's some really good information that's, that's in the 2021 codes, which aren't published yet. But, we've brought some of that language forward to the 2018 codes to address that, because we are seeing more of that. And we're seeing it come to our community. So, what's changing? We're going from the 2012 Family of International codes to the 2018. And for the first time, the city of Goodyear is adopting the commercial energy requirements as, as part of our code adoption. And the energy storage requirements that I mentioned, we've also brought those forward. And I think it's important to point out that our comparison cities, the 10 comparison cities that we use here in the valley, of those 10, six of them have already adopted the 2018 codes. Two of them are actively working on that, plus us. And also with the energy requirements, the commercial energy requirements, all 10 of our comparison cities have a commercial energy code requirement within their community. Now, we've made some modifications, because it is our first go-around with, with the energy codes. We didn't want to bring everything forward. So, we have provided some opportunity to kind of ease into the energy code requirements for, for our commercial projects. So, you may not have the same fascination of big buildings as I do. But, over the last 20 years, I've developed a profession in my profession related to that. So, now I focus on the life safety of those structures. And my team and I are all committed professionals to help promote the life safety codes throughout our community. So, your vote of approval here this evening will give us the direction that we need to move forward with the adoption of the 2018 Family of Codes.
Great. Randy, thank you. I know we have a speaker card on this. Go ahead.
Yes. Jackson Moll.
Mr. Moll, good to see you.
Yes. Good to see you as well, Vice Mayor. Good evening. My name's Jackson Moll. I'm the vice president of municipal affairs for the Home Builders Association of Central Arizona. Very happy to be here tonight in support of the code update. Over the past several code cycles, we've worked very closely with many of the cities and towns throughout the valley to develop best practices on how to do these code updates, recommended amendments, and then a transition period between this old code and the new code. From the very beginning of the update process, Mr. Westacott has been very proactive in reaching out to us and other stakeholders. We've worked together to incorporate these best practices. And so, I wanted to be here tonight to thank him for all of his hard work on this update. And with that, I'll keep this short, because I know you have had a full night already. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here, to express our support. And we would respectfully request your support as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anyone in the audience like to speak? Okay. We will have two votes on this item. So, will the city clerk please read resolution 2019-1974 by title only?
Adopt resolution number 2019-1974 declaring as public records the 2018 additions of international technical codes published by the International Code Council, various regulations for buildings, structures, and uses thereof, and the City of Goodyear amendments to 2018 International Technical Codes and Regulations for Buildings, Structures, and Uses thereof dated October 28, 2019.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve resolution number 2019-1974?
No move. Second.
Motion by councilmember Hampton, a second by councilmember Campbell. Any council discussion? Councilmember Pizzillo?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate the feedback that, for the stakeholders, that our community reaches out, because we pride ourselves on that. So, I really do appreciate you coming forward and, and mentioning that that's, that was all part of the process. So, thank you.
Councilmember Loretano?
I also want to echo that. And thank you for all your hard work and, and working as a team and, and getting everyone involved, because I think it's very important as we grow, that not only do we reach out to our stakeholders, make sure we're all on the same page, that we can grow well, that we're also consistent with a lot of the valley. So, I do appreciate all your hard work and your team and everything. So, thank you.
Councilmember Campbell, sir.
Thanks. So, Randy, do, does the codes get updated every three years? Is that basically what they do?
Yes. There's, there's a three-year cycle on the codes and...
And we're just now going from 2012 to 2018. So, that's a six-year...
Correct.
Waiting to do. Well, I hope that we'll be a little bit more proactive, so that when the 2021 codes come out, we're almost ready to do that. Because I think six years of lagging is almost too long for the development community, especially the ones that are trying to do the cutting edge and some of the lead projects. I appreciate you doing this. This council is very, we, we know how important these codes are. And we would like them written where they're business-friendly. where they're business-friendly and user-friendly, not only to police and fire, whatever we need to do to the development community, and not add too many caveats on top of whatever is already done because, and, and too, I understand some of these codes work better in New York or California or something, and not necessarily wonderful in Goodyear because it's, everything's different. But as long as we are talking to the development communities and to those that are most affected by this, so that we can make this work for them. Because we do want a better product, and we want to help them get there. So thank you very much, and we'll look for you to come back in three years with new codes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Keno.
Well, in addition to commending you for the collaboration and engaging the stakeholders, which I think is such a critical part of, of our, our, our success as a city and our development, I also want to thank you for how you look for making modifications and engaging them to make adjustments and, that are appropriate for our city. And it's very interesting to hear about this energy management and energy storage because that's definitely going to be the trend. So thank you for, in making that all come to life for us so that we all have, we have a plan for that.
Randy, I echo everyone's comments. Thank you for, you know, particularly the collaboration, but just the work you do on a day-in-and-day-out basis. You know, we talked earlier about Joe Schmitz's signature everywhere. Your guys' fingerprints are literally everywhere, so thanks for that. With no other comments, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
And now will the city clerk please read Ordinance Number 2019-1437 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1437, amending Section 9-1-1 of Article 9-1 of Chapter 9, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Goodyear City Code by adopting the 2018 additions of international technical codes and regulations for buildings, structures, and uses thereof, and adopting amendments thereto, providing terms for implementation, corrections of scrivener's errors, severability, repeal, and an effective date.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance Number 2019-1437?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell, second by Councilmember Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Next item is Item 21 on the Business Agenda to Consider the Adoption of Resolution 2019-1975 and Ordinance 2019-1438. I assume your presentation rolled them all in together?
Yes, that was the intent, to present them both together.
Perfect. Are there any speaker cards on this item?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak? Seeing none, will the city, city clerk please read Resolution 2019-1975 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-1975 declaring as public records those certain documents entitled International Fire Code 2018 Edition and Amendment to International Fire Code 2018 Edition filed with the city clerk.
Okay, we have two votes on, this is the FIRE code components, we've got two votes on this. So can I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2019-1975?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Keno, a second by Councilmember Lortano. Any council discussion? May we roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And will the city clerk please read Ordinance Number 2019-1438 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1438, amending Section 5-2-1 of the Goodyear City Code by adopting the International Fire Code 2018 Edition and adopting amendments thereto, providing for repeal and preservation of existing rights, providing for corrections of scrivener's errors, severability, and an effective date.
Can I have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 2019-1438?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell, a second by Councilmember Hampton. Open for council discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, the end is, the end is near. Item 22 is to consider adopting Ordinance 2019-1455, Human Resources Director Lyman Lockett.
Good evening, good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Tonight I'm bringing, bringing forward a recommendation to amend the city code. This recommendation will streamline the process and notification for certified employee organizations to proceed with the meet and confer process. The current ordinance calls for a two-step process in which the employee organization must first provide the city manager with a written intent to enter into the meet and confer process. Subsequently, the employee organization must then submit their written proposals relative to the meet and confer process. This amendment that is before you tonight will consolidate and streamline these processes and require only that the employee organization submit their intent along with the proposal, no earlier than November the 1st, and no later than November the 30th. And this should streamline the process. So tonight, we have a recommendation before you to adopt this.
Great, thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, will the city clerk please read Ordinance 2019-1455 by title only?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2019-1455, amending Article 3-12 of Chapter 3 of the Goodyear City Code relating to the City of Goodyear meet and discuss, meet and confer process, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances and codes, corrections, severability, and declaring an emergency and providing an effective date.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 2019-1455?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Pizzillo, a second by Councilmember Ham, uh, sorry, Keno. Open for council discussion.
No.
Seeing none, a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, last item on the Business Agenda is to consider adopting Resolution 2019-2009, Water Resources and Sustainability Manager Gretchen Erwin.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Stip and council members. I'm here tonight to present to you the First Amendment to the Rainbow Valley Development The original agreement was signed in October of 2018, and when that agreement was finalized, the wastewater and water services had not yet been determined. The city wanted to provide the service to the, to the development, however, they're just outside of our designation of assured water supply. When we applied for our designation in 2014, we did not anticipate significant growth in the Rainbow Valley area in the near future. But we did receive 274 acre feet in that, in our existing designation. The Rainbow Valley Development needs about 1,680 acre feet to fully plat, and the developers already done the work with the Arizona Department of Water Resources by obtaining an analysis of assured water supply, which shows that they have the physical availability of that water. So we did not have enough water in our existing designation to fully plat them, so we looked at several different options to possibly provide service. And we landed on something that was actually kind of outside the box, but we think it'll work for both the city and the developer. So the points to the agreement are that we will provide this, the water and wastewater services to the Rainbow Valley Development under our existing designation. We'll have to establish a satellite service area because they won't be connected to our existing service area, which ends at about Pecos Road. There will be some plating limitations, they'll only be allowed to develop or plat up to however many dwelling units they can serve with 274 acre feet. So when the city applies for a re-designation, the developer has agreed to dedicate their analysis, or that 1,680 acre feet that they've proven up, to the city, will fold that into our application for our new designation. And we plan to do that in mid-2023, and then the developer will be able to fully develop as soon as we submit that application. So we feel like this bridges that period so that we can go ahead and start development until we can go through our designation. There is one thing I would like to mention, and that is if, for some reason, the Department of Water Resources would not recognize the full 1,680 acre feet that they have already recognized the one time. But if they were to not recognize it in the next review, then they would only be allowed to develop up to however much the Department of Water Resources recognized. So we're very excited to welcome our very first development in the northern part of the Rainbow Valley sub-basin. There were some challenges because they were first. However, we feel like we've got a template for moving forward. We would like to develop our policy that requires all new development in Rainbow Valley to bring in their own water. So that means that they would need to work with the Department of Water Resources to get their analysis and show that they have physical availability, and then dedicate that to the city, which is exactly what this developer has done. It was agreed that we will need to have a different rate structure for water in Rainbow Valley, and that's because we need to cover the replenishment costs. So it will be very similar to our residents in the Liberty Service area who have to pay the CAGRd. They do that on their property tax bill, and in this instance, it'll just be covered on the water bill. It'll be the same cost as whatever the CAGRd charges us for replenishment. Also, this will be, this development in Rainbow Valley will be limited now to this particular development. We won't be able to bring anybody else in until we open up our designation in the Rainbow Valley sub-basin. But we're not, you know, this absolutely doesn't mean that we can't start the development process with any new developers that want to come in. And we figure by the time that they go through the whole process, we should be about ready to submit our new application, and so the timing will work out. So that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you. You said the applicant and the applicant's representative are here, would either of you like to speak? No? Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, will the city clerk please read Resolution 2019-2009 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-2009, approving the First Amendment to Development Agreement for Rainbow Valley, directing the city manager to execute the First Amendment to Development Agreement for Rainbow Valley, authorizing and directing the city manager or her designee to take all actions and execute all documents necessary to carry out the intent of the resolution and the First Amendment to Development Agreement for Rainbow Valley, and providing for an effective date.
Can I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2019-2009?
So moved.
A motion by Councilmember Hampton, a second by Councilmember Campbell. Open for council discussion. Councilmember Pizzillo.
Just a general question for the FIRE chief. Refresh my memory there, chief. As that area gets developed, how are we for our fire protection down around there?
So the, the area along Rainbow Valley from Willis down to Pecos, maybe just a little north of Ocatillo, will be covered by Fire Station 186, which is in the design process right now. Further south than that will require more station coverage, newer stations.
Any idea when that may, may occur?
I mean, certainly as development starts to come in, and if it meets, start to see some of that development, starts to meet some of the criteria for, for new station consideration, we'll certainly work with the city manager and bring that back to council for consideration.
But what we're doing right now, the area we're covered, the 186, the one that's in design will...
Yeah, it should cover, you know, like I said, up Pecos, maybe just a little north of Ocatillo.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Keno.
Oh, Gretchen and Javier, just wanted to thank you for your creativity in finding solutions to these difficult challenges, to make this happen, and to provide that template going forward. I just wanted to take that moment to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Campbell.
We're delighted to see the Rainbow Valley start, just like we started in West Goodyear that took us so long to get there because there was no water and no infrastructure. But being creative, we were able to do that. I would assume that by 2023, when we do apply for our new designation and DWR does take the extra allocation, the 1,680 feet of water in and fold it with us, we would be able to open up a little bit more of the development. But until then, we won't. And so when we open the other with the chief's assurance, we will be looking at adding an additional fire station probably on the other side, wherever this is going to go. And then if we ever open Sonoran Valley Parkway, this is going to be wonderful. Maybe we can get an off-ramp for them or something. So anyway, thank you so much. This is really exciting to develop that, that area because it is absolutely gorgeous out there.
Yes, it is.
It is just beautiful.
Great. Councilmember Hampton.
Yes, I was going to echo the same thing. Thank you for the heavy lift and, and working through this process to figure out a template for everybody else that might be heading down that same direction as well. I know it was a lot of hard work, so thank you for working with all the stakeholders and also your team as well. And also, like, yeah, just also what Councilwoman Campbell said as well, it is a beautiful area down there. I used to live down there at one point also, so looking forward to, to that. I know residents, future residents will definitely enjoy that area as well. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Gretchen, I know this was not a, an easy task, and I'm sure you had lots of help from, throughout the city, but I think it was the willingness of, of you and, and everyone on staff, along with the property owner and, and their, their staff to work together to find a, find a way to yes. And that, that's really important. And this is, I said it when we approved the development agreement, this is a huge moment for us as a city that we were able to overcome it, so, and that thanks goes to everybody because this, I think, touched every single department in the city. So it's a, it's a big deal for us. So with that, may I have the final roll call vote of the night?
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, not bad. Does the city council have any comments, recommendations, reports on current events, or requests for future items? Is that a yes or a no?
Yes, it's a yes.
Councilmember Hampton.
I sign, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. I already brought it up as well, but I know, I've been noticing some, I got a complaint with somebody with, I guess, a lot of construction on our roads lately, so there's a lot more sand and construction debris and things like that, so just to look at how slick it is for motorcycle riders. But, yeah, but I know staff has already been looking into it, I'm just bringing it up again, so thank you. And then, yeah, this is also a time we talk about what we saw and did, right? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, this was combined.
Yeah, so GAIN, GAIN Festival, GAIN Festival, GAIN Event, that was a great opportunity. I went to, I think, four or five different stops along the tour of GAINS, so it was definitely a, a great opportunity to see the community come together, and also city staff, police, fire, and other departments supporting that event. And it was like a traveling, I don't know, traveling entertainment type, type of event. It was, it was a good event, the community's definitely enjoyed it, the kids definitely enjoyed it, interaction with public safety and other departments as well. So thank you to the staff for supporting that. And then there was lots of other things we did. There were so much things that happened last couple of weeks, but I'll stop at that. Thank you.
Councilmember Lortano.
I just have a quick question that, when we're talking about construction and stuff. I, I know there's been a couple of people up in our area that are concerned about the area, and I should have brought this up at our meeting, I, I forgot. Up around the grade school off of Estrella, I guess there's been a lot of speeders and a lot of problems with that four-way stop. But then yesterday, I guess there's been some police checking out there, so I just wanted to kind of let you know. So thank you, I think you've already got it on... it on your radar, chief, so I appreciate that. And the only other thing I do, I want to thank Parks and the Ballpark for the wonderful Halloween festival. I think it went off without a hitch, and it was a lot of fun.
Great.
And Joe was scary.
No comment. Councilmember Keno?
Just drew a blank on what I wanted to say. Yeah, I remember now. Okay, so last week, I went to El Mirage Cares, which is a periodic community event that they hold for the purpose of educating. It's typically on youth-centered topics, bullying, teen suicide, drugs and things. But this particular topic was on vaping. And they had a great speaker from Community Bridges who just did a lot of really straight talk. And then they also had a school resource officer from the city of surprise who had all the paraphernalia that would just blow your mind. It showed you the first generation vaping to now the modern, which you could not even identify. Looks like fidget spinners, cosmetic cases, and it goes on and on. In fact, we learned that there is a store at the Arrowhead Mall that focuses on concealment clothing and accessories. So, it's quite a thing. But it was a very interesting topic, learned a lot, and I'm, I think we've done a lot of good work. Would like to see us pick up that education piece for the community as well.
Thanks, Councilmember Campbell.
I just want to echo about the GAIN event. I attended seven of them, and I was tired, so I didn't hit the last three that were, Deer Run was the last one. But I want to do a shout out to the Canyon Trails HOA party. It was probably the largest one we attended in the afternoon, and they very graciously had a lot of food left over and donated it to me, so that the police department and I could deliver it to the New Life Shelter. And they were absolutely thrilled to receive the food. It was hot dogs, buns, chips, sodas, Capri Sun cookies. And they were sharing with me that they had been worried about how they were going to be able to provide enough food for their Halloween party for the children that are in residence there right now, because they have 68 children in residence at the New Life Center right now. So, thank you Canyon Trails. It was wonderful to want to give it back to the community, and we appreciate it. And I want to thank the officers for loading up the Bearcat for me, because it wouldn't fit in my car, there was so much stuff, and then helping me get it delivered to New Life Center. That was just wonderful. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Hampton is a...
I got one more shout out. I had the honor of representing the mayor at the Oktoberfest event, Oktoberfest event? Yeah, with the German Air Force and Lufthansa. So, that was a great event. Also, she reminded me as well, because it also supported the New Life Center as well. So, there's about 2,100 people that make it an annual tradition to go there. So, also, shout out to public safety. I know they had an interesting night there as well. So, but it was a good event and a lot of good cultural things, yeah, with the German Air Force as well. Oh, yeah, I got to tap the cake. So, that was pretty awesome. So, start the party off. So, it was pretty fun.
There you go.
Thank you.
I think we, myself, Councilmember Pizzillo, and Campbell, we helped kick off the Make a Difference Day on Saturday. And I'm usually, for whatever reason, out of town every weekend when that goes off, but I was here this weekend. So, it was a great event, and I'm looking forward to hearing the recap. I'm assuming we're going to get that in some near future, maybe even in the next minute or two. But with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager for anything to report or follow up on.
Thank you. I do have a few items of recap and a few upcoming items. So, first, I did want to acknowledge the Make a Difference Day. On Saturday, it was our 12th Annual Make a Difference Day, with approximately 200 volunteers participating in the National Day of Community Service. They worked on 16 projects citywide to help spruce up the community, to include freshly painted fire hydrants and park fences, new plants in city parks and trash-free rightaways, and wanted to thank all those that volunteered on this special day to make our city brighter. Also, wanted to acknowledge the GAIN event. Also, on Saturday, we celebrated the Getting Arizona Involved in Neighborhoods event, and we had 10 different neighborhoods who participated, ranging in sizes and scopes, each one showing a glimpse of the neighborhood's unique personality. Wanted to give a special thank you to all the event organizers, neighborhood services, police and fire representatives, and everyone else who made those events very special. Wanted to highlight that we have a survey ongoing right now, the 2019 Goodyear Retail Survey, launched on October 23rd. We encourage all of our residents to participate in identifying their favorite current retailers and those that they would like to see come to our community. You can access the survey from any of our social media pages and also our city website. The survey will be open for residents to take now through November 22nd, and we appreciate everyone's feedback. Upcoming, we have two events on Saturday. The Household Hazardous Waste Drop-Off Event, which is a partnership with Avondale, Tolleson, Litchfield Park in Goodyear, will have the Residential Hazardous Waste Drop-Off at our Public Works Facility on Saturday from 8:00 a.m. until noon. There is no charge, however, residents do need to bring a city utility bill showing an active account and driver's licensee for proof of residency. And then, last but not least, on Saturday, we have Camp Go Back. The Parks and Recreation Department will host Camp Go Back at the ballpark from 4 until 8. It's an all-ages summer camp throwback event featuring adventures, activities, games, and more that will take you back to your old bonfire-loving days. We will end the night with a camping-themed movie in the grass. Entry and parking are free, and the experience is priceless. Thank you.
That's it? All right, with no further business or information, our next meeting will be a work session on November 4th at 5:00 p.m., followed by the regular meeting at 6:00 p.m. With no further business, this meeting is adjourned.